It is 7:30. This is the City Council of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota. It's April 5th at 7:30, and we will call the meeting to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Badeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, if you are online and waiting in for the public hearing, you've got about a half hour to hang on, we'll get there, so hang with us, please. Item number four is an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are underway. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Motion.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are, we have consent. Item number six, presentations, Parking Commission interim report. Kevin Jaeger, are you going to give us our report?
Mr. Chansky is going to give the report. I'm here to field questions.
Right on. Mr. Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my privilege to present the Parking Commission's interim report to the council this evening. The Parking Commission has been meeting regularly. They meet on the third Thursday of each month. Throughout their work since they first started meeting in December, they first identified seven category issues that they will be addressing over the next couple of months, or number of months. They are finance, parking enforcement, safety and walkability, education and marketing, patron and business growth, community, character, and residential cohesion. The purpose of this interim report is to bring back some of their early findings, as well as a few early recommendations, and seek your guidance for the next steps. The first two items in this report that you have received earlier today, you have in front of you, are more of some of their findings, and the second two are early recommendations. So the first finding that the Parking Commission, and most significant, really kind of determined how they were going to operate moving forward is they asked themselves the question, is the city in the business, in the parking business? What they determined is that they believe that the city's best position is if the city gets out of the business of providing off-street parking and moves towards the business of managing, being a manager of parking. They identified that the city is incurring significant financial losses from providing parking, as well as accumulating long-term liabilities without a commensurate source of revenue. There's no viable plan to close this gap, as from a supply and demand perspective, there's an abundance of parking in the core downtown and/or not enough demand for the parking to raise rates. We've done, the Community Development Department and the Planning Department has done a number of parking studies in the last few years, and with both, we did one in '15, and then we did one in eight, nine, I think it was maybe sixteen and nineteen. And both of those studies pretty much showed that even at our peak periods, we do have, you know, at the most, we were 80% full downtown. So from a pure number of parking slots, parking spots perspective, there's not a parking problem. Now, we'll get into later that when you come into who is parking, then there comes a different issue. As you can see, there's a graph provided at the bottom of that first page that Finance Director Hillman kindly put together showing that the current five-year history of the parking lot fund from just a basic revenues and expenditure, and you can see, as we move into the future, it does look like we will be continuing to operate in a deficit if you look just at base off of the revenue that the, that their leased parking lots or paid parking lots currently make. So that goes to the second finding, which that the city should become a more, should be more active in managing parking, not necessarily providing parking. So most of the parking challenges within the core downtown do not rate to, do not relate to the supply of parking, as I mentioned, but to its overall use and management. And there's three examples. The city provides on-street parking, which is the most valuable parking for businesses, but we do little to manage that asset. There are different needs for parking throughout the day and overnight, but these are not currently addressed in any kind of nuanced way. And third, within two blocks of the core downtown, there's excessive amounts of parking, but the walkability connecting that parking with businesses is lacking. IT GIS Director Sean Strong actually did a map for the Parking Commission of all the surface parking lots, and we'll call it in the greater downtown, from which, from the river all the way to 13th Street, from Washington roughly down to Oak. And granted, not all of those lots are public lots, but just from that count on GIS, there is north of 2,000 off-street parking spots in that core, in that greater downtown area. The Parking Commission identifies that having fewer parking spaces that are better managed will provide more opportunity for business enterprise and tax-based, tax-based growth while costing taxpayers, including those downtown, less money. This should be preferred to having an excess of parking that is insufficiently managed. This comes to their first recommendation, which is a hierarchy recommendation. One of the other questions that they asked themselves is, okay, if we're going to do this work, how do we manage that we're being successful in our recommendations and the work they're going to be doing? So to successfully implement a parking strategy, the Parking Commission says the city should establish some measures. They came up with three measures. These are not exclusive measures. They're measures that they felt were pretty low-hanging fruit and pretty easy to, to measure early on, and you always could add more specific measures if you're looking to judge specific things. The three are, first is increased property values. We'll see success if our, if property values go up. A successful parking management strategy would increase the value of land and property within the core downtown at greater rates than we see in commercial property elsewhere. So if we're managing parking properly downtown, and the value is increasing at a greater rate than, say, West Brainerd, that would indicate that there's something right going on downtown. That measure can be easily had just through the county assessor's records. The second would be increased sales tax receipts. Can we, can we attest that parking, better managed parking downtown is equating to more economic activity downtown? These records we can get through the Minnesota Department of Commerce. And the third would be increasing human count overall activity. Are we seeing more, not necessarily more cars, but more people downtown? And that, again, can just be done through periodic counts of people that we see at peak times downtown. And the Parking Commission has requested a benefit knowing the city's council reaction to these proposed measures of success and any others members would consider important. The final recommendation is a bigger immediate recommendation and a policy recommendation that the commission would like to recommend to the city council. In an effort to move from a parking provider to a manager of parking while moving in a more fiscally responsible direction, the Parking Commission does recommend that the city council direct staff to undertake the following steps over the next 90 days, and the years are broken up into a 30, 60, and 90 days. In the next 30 days, if directed by council, staff would begin to identify options for supplementing leased parking within the downtown. Again, this would be assuming that parking may be going away. What other options for parking do people have, especially when you're thinking overnight for our downtown tenants, as well as for business staff, business employees, not necessarily patrons at this time? In the next 30 to 60 days, the Parking Commission recommends notifying leaseholders in the Burlington Northern Lot that the city is discontinuing providing leases on that property in 60 days. And we'd share the alternatives that we learned in the first 30 days for leased parking as a part of that notification. In the next 90 days, that the city would notify Burlington Northern that the city is ending the lease on the property we are currently leasing for that parking. Per that lease, the city has to give Burlington Northern 30 days' notice to end that lease. One of the reasons this recommendation was devoted on to come before the city council at this time was because there is a current pending bill from Burlington Northern for the year. A little bit of history of the Burlington Northern Lot. We lease, the city leases that lot from Burlington Northern to then lease to residents. And for each year, that has a 3% increase. For this year, it's a little over $14,000. So we do have a pending invoice from them. So that's why this came, was coming for the city council now, to have the decision to either continue to pay it for 2021 and look into the future, 2022, or go at this more of a month-to-month rate for the next 90 days until we formally end that lease. This is a first step toward parking, better parking management, improving the character of our community, and increasing the city's overall economic vitality. And the Parking Commission welcomes any feedback or guidance that the mayor or the city council may wish to provide at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Let's see if the council has any questions on what we just got. Gabe?
Yeah, I have a few, and it's related to just the managing parking, you know? I agree that there is an excessive amount of parking if every parking spot downtown is equal to the other. Significantly way more parking stalls than are needed, without question. So if we're managing parking, how do we manage the parking to get Bremer Bank, or the Office Shop, or Mid-Minnesota, or US Bank, or Guide Point Pharmacy, or the Thrifty White Building, or Sharp and Tier and Lane to allow public parking into their private property? I wouldn't. I would make the city pay me, then we're back into the same situation as the BNSF lot. So what are, what are the solutions to managing all this excess parking that we have no control over?
Mr. Chansky, or thank you.
Kevin.
Yes, sorry. Okay, so the first, I guess globally, like what I'd like to say right off the bat is that there is not one single quick answer in any of this conversation. When I was asked to be on this board and very eagerly raised my hand and said yes, I figured, ah, a couple of months, we'll pound through a few meetings, we'll look at some numbers, and we'll come back to you, to you guys with some intelligent answers. And I can tell you that the reality is, is that this is a conversation that has robust nuance, it is multifaceted, and the reality is, is that of all the seven parts, all of those have to be in balance with each other for any one of them to work. We cannot manage without enforcement, we cannot manage without education and marketing. All of those pieces have to happen. To answer your question directly, Gabe, what I can tell you is, is that we don't really know for sure. What we do know is that we have outlined some directives within our group that say, we don't know all of the answers, but we have a clear direction. And we believe that in combination of us making short-term decisions, letting the free marketplace take its position also, and letting this kind of play out, we believe that we can then receive feedback at the same time we are working on education, marketing, and those types of things, and begin to outline a plan. The Burlington Northern Lot is a perfect example of a lot where it's, we have an abundance of parking there that is mostly unused. We cannot fiscally make that, we cannot fiscally make that work, especially when we take into consideration the capital gains. Keep in mind that these, that the capital assessments here are just based on 2021 standards, not future cost also. But the reality is, Gabe, is that we don't know for sure exactly how we're going to manage all of those things, but we're going to let this kind of play out. We know that in the short term, we should not be in the, in the business of parking, and we're going to let it play out.
Thank you. I agree with the goal of not being in the business of parking. I've agreed with that the whole time. I have two more, if I can, Kelly.
You can.
So directly on the BNSF lot.
Yep.
You know, you just answered, oh, we don't know what we're going to do. But we do know we should throw these 80 cars, 58 cars. It's almost always leased out, it doesn't cash flow, but it's almost fully leased out. So we have 58 employees and residents who do have their cars stored back behind that building, out of sight. Good place. Where do those 58 cars go? One, and then two, why is that parking lot, outside of the finances of it all, why is that parking lot that's at least paved, less desirable than the railroad land directly across 8th Street? You know what, you know what the railroad does when they're managing their own lot. The weeds get this tall. They pile their junk in there. Is that what we want at the end of 6th Street, or 7th Street downtown Brainerd?
Well, okay, so the first, to answer the first question, that's why we've asked staff, we don't have any, we have no intention of asking you guys to just kick people out of the lot, fend for yourselves, hope for the best. The idea here is that we're going to, in the 0 to 30 days, we're going to identify the options for supplementing those, those spaces that are currently taken now. In the 30 to 60 days, we're going to notify those people that are currently using those spaces of what other opportunities are, how to get in contact with the other space rental private owners or other lots that are available, and then we're going to notify Burlington that we're no longer taking the lot. So the idea isn't that we're just going to, you know, fit one fail swoop, you guys are out, we're done with this lot, fend for yourselves. We would like to implement a strategic plan of engaging the public who is using it, letting them know what's going on, and then show them some options and how to get out of there before we do all this. As for the Burlington Northern, general mindset here is, is I don't believe that the city should own or manage property just because a given property owner doesn't take care of that property. We should enforce property that isn't taken care of, or isn't, isn't meeting the standards of basic upkeep, but I think the question of, or the mindset of, we should take care of it because no one else will, is exactly backwards.
Well, I think the railroad is here first, and we can't send them notices. We can't just mow it for them and then bill them, can we, David?
We can, but we would actually be paying them to mow their, to mow their.
No, I'm saying like how we enforce, if you didn't mow your lawn down on bluff, we would just pay for somebody else to go mow it and throw it on your bill. We can't do that to BNSF.
Absolutely not.
So.
You can, you'll just never get paid.
Yeah, we could try, yeah. Okay, thank you, those are, those are my questions.
You know, I have an, I have an idea, and I don't want to cut anybody else, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I suspect Kevin Jaeger just brought up the crux of the matter. There's a lot, there's a lot to this.
Oh, yes.
I want to give everybody a chance to ask a question, but on the other side of the coin, I almost think since there, I sense there's more to this, as what you just said, and as your question just alluded to. And I suspect that there's probably not going to be a motion tonight on your plan, because there's too many questions. I'm just guessing, I don't know that. My thoughts are, this really should go on a committee for more lengthy discussion and a recommendation to the council. I appreciate the recommendations from the Parking Commission, but I would really like to see some more in-depth, have everybody's questions answered. And I don't know that tonight is the night for that committee meeting. And I say it like that, because that's what I think it's going to end up being. Now, if somebody has a burning question, I want to, I want to give you the chance to say it. But I also want to understand that, that there's a recommendation that came out of this committee, and some are online, we should act on that. And if it's not, if it's tonight, tonight it is, if you don't think you've got a lot of questions, but I suspect from what I just heard from Gabe, I know I've got probably a half dozen I would like to put to a committee to have answered, and we could conceivably go till midnight tonight just on this. And if we're going to go till midnight, we should come up with a motion. So I'm going to ask right now, does anybody have a burning, I would like to put this on PNF.
We, we've had it many times in the last five years, we'll, we'll take it back.
Does that seem, that gives us two weeks to give all our questions to Gabe, and you two can go to PNF and answer them, or get them ahead of time and answer them, so we can conceivably put together a motion? Or were you hoping for something different this evening, Mr. Parking Chair?
Mr. President, if I may, quite honestly, we came back with this report, it was pretty much a unanimous discussion within our group to come back to this report, to show that we are working on solutions for you guys, to be perfectly honest with you.
Yep.
And, and we laid out a, a recommendation right off the bat, again, in good faith, and in the trust that you've placed in us, to say, we do, we are actually getting something done, we are beginning to understand some layers of this. We may only understand one of 50, but right now, we understand at least one, and we brought that back to you as a recommendation, just so, quite honestly, to show that we are working on this and that we, we are beginning to understand this. So I'm fine with letting this go on as long as it needs to go on, and I'm of the mindset that this is going to take a while, just because of the nuance that's involved in all of this. But we're asking you guys to be patient, willing participants in that process, and we will keep working on it.
When I read this less than 24 hours ago, I came up with many questions, some of which Gabe's already answered, but I could conceivably see us going late into the evening on just this issue.
Right.
And, and if we don't get to the point where we answer the expectations that you've laid out with the timeframe and everything, then it's just been a committee meeting, and I just assume, keep putting it as a committee. So if that's, if that's all right. Now, I want to ask, and I see you, Dave, I want to ask if there's a burning question right now, besides Mayor Badeau's, that has to be answered tonight? If not, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to put this on PNF. Mayor Badeau.
Yeah, just to follow up with Kevin's comments, I think more than anything, this group understands that this is going to be an issue that there are going to be questions about. And right now, what they're asking for is guidance and making sure that specifically the Burlington Northern part of it, which was identified immediately as a burning issue within what they're going to need to do, that needs to be in front of you so that you can make your comments on it, so that they have better direction on that part. But the secondary part to it as well, that I think is really important, is the accessibility and the connectivity for walking as well. That part of it is very, very important, and what that means and what that may look like in terms of getting people from one area within the downtown to another, I think needs to be discussed within the council members as well. Because that will include things like lighting, and like signage, and wayfinding. That will change the way that things look within that area, and that conversation will be coming from them, but should be helped guided from you, so you're not just coming into a wall as soon as it shows up.
Do you know the timeliness, Mayor Badeau, of the, of the lease bill from BN Railroad? Connie does?
It is currently due.
Due now?
It is due right now, it was due, I do believe, April 1st. But we were going to maybe start making monthly payments on it, or delaying it a little bit. That was our plan, it's, it's due, but we.
In its entirety?
Yes, but we could.
$15,000.
Yep, but staff was thinking about paying it on a monthly basis until we get this figured out. You know, until council decides it gives us direction, at least then we're paying a monthly payment to BN.
Okay. Anybody have a thought on the recommendation that Finance Director Hillman just made to delay or stagger the payments monthly on the BN bill? So let's stick to that little portion of it. We're going to go, Mr. Pritchett, Tiffany, and then Gabe.
I think unless we're kicking people out this month, I think we pay it monthly.
Okay. Tiffany?
I would also think that monthly would be the way to go.
Gabe?
I like monthly, if it's allowed by the lease. Can we make monthly payments?
I don't know what they would say if we start making monthly payments, rather than one, all at one time. I mean, the bill is, the invoice is for a year, but, but I don't think that they would have a problem for making monthly payments.
Okay, let's look for a motion to direct Finance Director Hillman to pay the bill monthly.
So moved.
Motion by Pritchett, second by O'Day. Any further discussion on that, Councilman Johnson?
If they try hitting us with 18% interest charges or something, I'd like this to come back ASAP.
Excellent point. Any further discussion on that one portion? Okay, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Okay, so that gives us direction on how to handle that. Is there anything else that's burning on what we got presented this evening, before I ask for a motion to put it to PNF? And we'll go Tiffany, and then Mike.
I, I don't know if you would like a motion on this, but I would like to see the staff move forward with identifying options, that zero to 30-day recommendation, so that when we come back to PNF, we have an answer on, to some of those questions. Would you like that as a motion, Mr. President?
No, you just guaranteed that Mr. Johnson, Chair of PNF, will welcome your thoughts, and that will be the end of the discussion on this, will be to please give your thoughts today, tomorrow, the next day. Don't do it the Monday afternoon of the next meeting. The sooner he can get it, and get it to Mr. Jaeger or Mr. Chansky, the sooner you'll get a better answer. You were next, Mike.
That's exactly what I was going to say, is I like the zero to 30 to start off.
Chairman Johnson.
And, and I like this idea, and I like the idea of getting the questions as soon as possible. I would like the questions and answers to be in the packet, to be out the Thursday before the next council meeting. So if you can get me questions by next Monday or Tuesday, I can get them to Chairman Jaeger, Community Development Director Chansky, Engineer Paul Sandy, Finance Director Connie Hillman, everybody's going to have to.
One week, all right. Is there a motion to put this? Connie Hillman.
I just have a comment, those questions, are they going to go to the Parking Commission to address first?
They're going to go to him.
Okay.
It's going to go on in about two seconds, we're going to get a motion in a second to give it to PNF.
Perfect.
We'll trust Mr. Johnson does the right stuff with that. Is there a motion to move this issue to PNF?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, second by O'Day. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, all right. That, that agenda item has been dealt with. We'd like to see you get it to Chairman Johnson by the, you all have his email, right? Paul, you have something else that we did?
No, nothing on this.
Jennifer, something that you need?
Nothing on this item, Mr. Chair, but if you could give me a moment before you start on committee reports, I would appreciate it.
I absolutely can. I just want to make sure then that you get your questions to Mr. Johnson, Chairman Johnson, by the end of the day Monday. Okay, so one week from today. Better to get them to him Sunday night, okay? To give him some time, and that, and to see what's going to happen, to see if they can come up with a recommendation two weeks from today. All right, Administrator Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We were wondering if maybe we want to move the public hearings in front of committee reports? We do have several people on the, on the line, and we are assuming they are here regarding the public hearings.
It has been a half hour.
Yep, all right, it has been a half hour. I think that's an excellent idea. Chairman Johnson, would you move to bring the public hearings on, where are we here?
I move we bring 9A and 9B up to the agenda to right now, after 6A.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion by Johnson, a second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none. To adjust the agenda, Administrator Bergman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we're on 9A, and how this works, remind me, Paul Sandy, what do you have to do if you're online and you wish to speak? Or Sean?
Three to raise your, star three to raise your hand.
Star three raises your hand, and.
Six, not me.
And Sean Strong says star six will unmute you. So if you're online and you want to speak, you need to raise your hand and press star three, and then, and then when we, we recognize you, it'll be star six, and that will unmute you. So hopefully you've all got that. The first item in public hearing is 9A. This is a public hearing and resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specs, and ordering advertisement for bids for improvements nineteen dash nineteen Jackson Street and Northwest Third Street reconstruction project. Mr. Sandy, anything you wish to add before we open the public hearing?
It's up to you, Mr. President, on how you want me to go about this. I can give a brief overview of the project as I did at the last council meeting when you approved-
Please do so. So everybody knows what we're talking about. And this is where you get to talk about the project, not so much the assessment. That comes later, but we'll let you talk about the assessment too. Okay, Engineer Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this improvement that sits before the council tonight, and we'll have a public hearing on, is for the reconstruction or construction of Jackson Street between Fourth and Third Street Northwest and Northwest Third Street between Jackson and James Street. So as you all are aware, we've been going through a lengthy process on the design and inevitably, the construction of Northwest Fourth Street behind the Ace Hardware Strip Mall. So what you have in your packet tonight is the feasibility report that you guys received a couple of council meetings ago, in which outlines the project, kind of the need for this project, the anticipated traffic shifts or changes due to the roundabout at Fourth and Jackson, and the full median, which will disallow left-hand turns at James Street. So we're anticipating a little bit of traffic changes back behind the mall. This is a gravel surface roadway currently. We perform a lot of maintenance to this roadway because it is a gravel surface road. What we're proposing to do is place curb and gutter and a little bit of storm sewer, and inevitably pave that street to a local residential seven-ton road design for, so to help out with those traffic shifts that we're anticipating with the reconstruction of Fourth Street. As you can see in the project costs, which include engineering, we're anticipating to spend right around a hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars on the roadway itself. Our storm sewer cost is right around sixty-one thousand dollars and some change. We have a couple of sanitary sewer and water main items that are at a minimal expense. And our project assessable cost, based on our assessment policy, are one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. That is a hundred percent assessment based on our assessment policy. So in the feasibility report, due to the future traffic changes, the roadway not being constructed for the higher use, we have deemed this project feasible, cost-effective, and necessary due to those factors. The improvement should be constructed in conjunction with the Fourth Street project to prevent unsafe driver behaviors, avoid additional wear and tear on the gravel surfacing that is currently present, and avoid higher maintenance costs that come along with that, along with providing the traveling public with a safe and improved surface with proper drainage to ingress and egress from the neighborhood and commercial areas in that neighborhood. So at this point, I'll answer any questions from the council. Otherwise, I would recommend opening the public hearing.
Counsel, any question from Engineer Sandy on what project we're talking about? All right, hearing none. We're going to let the public speak. And so if you're here to talk about city improvement nineteen dash nineteen, which is the Jackson Street and Northwest Third Street reconstruction project, please hit star three, and we'll try, and we're going to let everybody who wants to say what they have to say about this project. Anybody online or on the phone, at home, wishing to speak on this improvement project, which is Jackson Street and Northwest Third Reconstruction, please hit star three. I'm going to ask for a third time and final time. If you're online or on the phone or at home and wish to speak on this improvement project, one-nine-one-nine Jackson Street and Northwest Third Street, this is your final ask. Please hit star three. Okay. I hear none. I see none. I sense none. We will close the public hearing. And we are going to look for a motion, Mr. Sandy, to adopt this. What is the motion here, actually?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the motion would be to adopt the attached resolution, which orders the improvement, approves the plans and specifications, and orders the advertisement for quotes to be opened on April twenty-third at ten AM.
Thank you. You know the motion, you know the project, Mr. O'Day. So moved by O'Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion on this project and this resolution? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that project will be moved forward. Item nine B, a public hearing and resolution, ordering improvement and improving plans and specs, and ordering advertisements for bids for improvement twenty dash oh five and twenty dash oh six, which is Madison Street and Southeast Brainerd Construction Project. Before I open the public hearing, I'll ask Engineer Sandy to give us a brief overview as to what this project is.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you can see in your packet in the feasibility report, I have listed out all of the street segments that this project will encompass. Being, I'm not going to go through them all, but just from a brief perspective, Madison Street, St. Louis Avenue, Chicago Avenue, Portland Avenue, Rosewood Street, Southeast Fifteenth Street, Quince Street, Southeast Sixteenth Street, Walnut Street, and Pine Street. So through this feasibility report, I go through basically when all the last resurfacings were completed on these streets, what their pavement scores have come out to be on each street segment. You know, as we go through this, you know, keep in mind that the two-point-five range for a street segment is kind of where we start looking at a reconstruction or a resurfacing of the street. That number is also, you have to take into account underlying utility needs. So in this project, we have a multitude of utility improvements that we'll be performing, both to the storm sewer on all these streets and the water main underlying the streets. Many of the streets that we have listed here tonight are in very poor condition. If you've traveled on Portland or Chicago Avenue recently during the last snowfall, our snowplow has actually removed portions of the pavement with their blades and pushed them to the curb because the pavement is in such disarray. So take those pavement scores into consideration when you're looking at these projects. Most of the projects consist of a resurfacing, which is a removal of the existing pavement or tar, the gravel surface, and rebuilding the street from that point. We do have a multitude of streets in this area that we'll be performing what we call a subcut on, which is removal of two feet of unsuitable soil under the roadway, placing of a separation fabric, and replacement of some suitable fill, which is the sand. And then we put gravel and batuminous back down on that to help stabilize the road surface. You'll see some of these streets have been constructed more recently than others, that being some of these in the early two thousands. However, those streets are almost completely broken up already due to the poor soil conditions in this area. Other things that we're working on, Madison Street down in the industrial park has some storm sewer under the roadway that is pushing out of the pavement due to freeze thaw and high groundwater conditions. That has caused a majority of the distress on the street service that we're seeing today. Most of the street distresses in other areas are due to just the underlying poor soils in this area. There is an incorporation of sidewalks on Fifteenth and Sixteenth per the Walkable Bikeable Committee's recommendations, as they were approved by the City Council. All these streets besides Madison are constructed to a residential standard, which is a thirty-five-foot roadway surface and a seven-ton road design, which is a residential city street. Madison Street is being constructed at the forty-four-foot width it is today and the nine-ton road surface, which is for commercial purposes. You can see in the packet all of the estimated costs broken down by roadway, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, BPU costs, and how much assessable costs there are per the assessment policy. And then we go through and why these projects are needed and why they're feasible at the end of the report. And so I can answer any questions once again from the council at this time. Otherwise, I recommend opening the public hearing and taking any testimony for that.
Excellent. Any questions for Engineer Sandy on these projects? All right, hearing none. We will open the public hearing at eight-twelve. And if you wish to speak to the council on these projects, you hit star three. And then when you're recognized, you hit star six and you get to talk. So star three raises your hand, star six, when we recognize you, gets you to talk. And so if you've got something to say on any of these projects, this is your time. Thanks for calling in. We are officially open. Anybody wishes to speak on this?
Mr. Chair, the number ending in eight-zero does have their hand raised, if you want.
Number eight-zero, you can hit star six. Please tell us your name and address, so we know who you are, because you're just a number on our screen, and tell us what you'd like to say about this project.
All right, can you hear me okay?
We hear you. Perfect. What's your name and address, please?
All right, so my name is Dexter Hanson. My address is ten oh eight, ten twelve, and ten sixteen Rosewood Street.
Perfect. Thanks for calling in. What do you have to say about the project?
My road is a dead-end street. I have all of these proposed costs. I am not against paying on my ten sixteen property. That one, it's before the alley. That's the only spot that anybody ever drives or parks. I would be willing to pay your guys' assessment on the ten sixteen Rosewood property. But beyond that, even when the snowplows come through, they plow all the snow directly onto my property. They don't try and push it to the end of the road that you guys are proposed to charge me for. I mean, my estimated cost on just one of the properties, my smallest property, is thirty-four hundred dollars. And there's nobody that ever parks there. There's nobody that drives there. It's a dead-end spot. The road isn't the worst in the world. So I wanted to at least confront you guys with, our alley does not drain. So I have half a foot of standing water. Anytime it really rains or during the thaw, we have mud just everywhere. We have rocks in the alley. And I will take the skid steer and I'll level it out. But I would be willing to pay all of set improvements if you guys were able to pave the alley. I do own almost half the alley, and I can get anybody else in that alley to sign off on that.
Anything else?
Also, I just recently bought a, the foreclosed property, the ten oh eight Rosewood Street, which turns out immediately after I bought it, I get this, this is the one I'm talking about, with the thirty-four hundred dollar proposed thing. I mean, I bought the property for eight thousand dollars. And now, it doesn't even, it barely touches the street. And you guys want me to pay thirty-four hundred bucks for something that no one is ever going to use?
We hear you.
I myself, and I can get the neighbors to agree on this. If we were to pave up until the alley and leave the rest dirt, redo the sewer, make sure that ten oh eight gets new water and sewer connects, I think that would be a lot better suited for the project versus paving almost all the way to the bike trail that no one uses.
Thank you. Anything else?
I guess that's about all.
All right. Well, this is where you get to tell us what you think. So thank you very much for calling in. We're going to listen to any of the other or all of the other callers on this, and we sure appreciate you calling in. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this project, who's online, on the phone, press star three, and you'll get your shot. I don't see them.
Ninety-five has their hand up.
Okay. If your phone number or ends in ninety-five, please hit star six and tell us your name and address, so we know who's here.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gorm. I live at fifteen twenty-four Pine Street.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Kelly.
Tell us what you got on this project.
Sure. Well, I got, you know, over thirty-three hundred dollars in assessments. And I'm just wondering how much of the wear and tear on my street is due to the garbage trucks that go up and down the street all week. Makes me crazy. I understand that streets need to get done, and assessments happen, and sewer improvements, that's great. But I see so many garbage trucks. I just wish that the City Council, the city would do something about this. It's a climate change issue. It's air pollution. It's noise. It's completely unnecessary to have, I, there's at least four garbage trucks that we go down my little tiny street. And I just wonder how much of the wear and tear on my street is from those garbage trucks.
Okay. Anything else, Sarah?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. We appreciate you calling in. Thank you. That's a good question. Okay, if you're here to talk to the council about improvement twenty dash oh five, twenty dash oh six, a whole bunch of streets in Southeast Brainerd, please press star three, and we'll listen to you.
Mr. President, I think oh one was the next one to raise their hand, and then oh seven after that.
Number ends in oh one, please hit star six, and then tell us your name and address, please, and what your thoughts are.
Hello?
Hello, we hear you. What's your name and address?
This is Kitty J. Pop, seven two three Fifteenth Street, Southeast.
Thanks for calling in, Kitty. Tell us what you think about these projects.
Well, I'm just wondering, your map, I'm not a real good map reader. I looked at that, and I was trying to figure out what you were saying and where things were going. And where are you proposing sidewalks to go, like on Fifteenth and Quince?
Now, I apologize, Kitty. We don't have a map of it right up in front of us as well. Mr. Engineer, can you answer that if there's?
Yes, so the sidewalks are currently planned on Fifteenth from Oak to Rosewood on the west side, and on Sixteenth from Oak to Pine on the west side.
Did you hear that, Kitty?
So there's four blocks. There's three on Fifteenth on the west side.
Okay, so-
Across the street from you, Kitty.
Yeah, across the street from you.
Okay. So then what about on the little Fifteenth where it goes around the curb area?
No.
Is it going over that way at all?
No. The engineer is shaking his head, no.
No, no, no. So like I'm being assessed fifty-four hundred dollars for the one side and the other added together with a discount because of the double lot? So does everyone going down the street, if they have the same length of lot as me, get assessed that amount? Or just me because I'm on the street?
The assessment methodology is the same for all the lots, correct?
Yep.
Where going down until my neighbors to the east of me, they get the same assessment?
Well, it might be different. It might be different based on their lot size.
If I may.
Yeah, here, the engineer's going to try and answer this, Kitty.
So Kitty, you're on a-
I'm on the corner lot.
Yep, so you're on the corner of Quince and Fifteenth, correct?
Yes.
So you are getting an assessment for your front lot on Quince, your front yard? And your side yard, you get the fifty percent reduction in the assessment because it is your side yard. So you have a hundred and forty-foot lot. You're only getting assessed for seventy feet of that. So you have, because we're redoing Fifteenth and Quince, you are getting hit with both assessments on both streets, but you do get the discount on the Fifteenth Street side.
I feel good about that, but, so my question is, so I pay that, so then- I feel good about that, but, so my question is, so I pay that, so then like my neighbors going east, do they pay that or I just pay it because I'm on the street side?
Your neighbors to the east will have front yard assessments because they don't have a side yard abutting another street that's getting done. Their side yard is your lot or their near, their other, the easterly lot.
So then should that be, be distributed to everybody kind of or?
Um, i- it is, everybody on Quince will pay and everybody on Fifteenth will pay. You just get double hit because you're on the corner, but you only get partially double hit on the one side. So you really don't get doubly hit. Pardon me?
Any way of reducing the double hit? I know you're reduced if I have, but by reducing it more or no or?
Well, I have good news. At, when the project's done, you can complain about your assessment. But right now, we're talking about the project. A- and if you don't like the assessment, now's the time. You can mention that.
Yeah. And it's project, so do they foresee a lot more foot traffic in this area if they put a sidewalk in or?
I'm not sure.
I can speak to that, I guess. So back in, I think, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the uh, walkable, bikeable committee came up with um, a very large list of recommendations for infill sidewalks. Um, this was one of them and we promised basically that committee that when we have adjacent street projects, that one of their recommendations comes up by, that we would install those sidewalks as part of that. Now with that, we've actually been going through a new safe routes to school engineering study with Minda right now. And one of their recommendations was adding north and south sidewalks south of Oak Street, so that the students that use the sidewalks to get to Harrison um, have somewhere to walk um, on the, from the north and south. There's no, there's a lot of east-west sidewalks in southeast, not a lot of north-south, not a lot of connections. And that's what we're, what, what, what we're doing here. And we don't assess for sidewalks. So the sidewalks are a hundred percent of city cost. And so um, the only cost that people are seeing are the street uh, resurfacing costs, which is approximately fifty percent of the cost to resurface the street.
Anything else Kitty?
I'll put that. Pardon?
Anything else?
Well, I'm not just thinking about myself, but across the street for the neighbors and and the trees they'll have to take out for it, that have been there for years and years.
Correct.
Taken into consideration or people who have fences up that it'll butt up to it or take it away on the sidewalk part of it?
You are correct.
Is that more beneficial for the community or for the green lovers? Getting rid of some trees that have been here for hundreds of years?
We do replace every tree on a one-to-one basis. Obviously, you can't replace the um, hundred-year age of a tree, but we do replace them one-to-one. Um, and any fence that we remove as part of the project, we do um, help put those back.
Alright Kitty, we've got a number of callers waiting behind you. You've got your three to five minutes. Is there anything else?
Nope, I'm good now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller number seven, you had your hand up next. Please, please uh, hit star six and tell us your name and give us your address. Caller number seven.
Thank you for your time. This is uh, Jason Atwater. I'm with Consolidated Telephone CTC, uh, located at eleven oh two Madison Street.
Jason, thanks for calling in. Tell us what you've got to say.
I would just emphasize the need for the re, resurface on Madison Street. Um, I think Mister Sandy noted the storm sewers are popping onto the pavement. It's there's some real hazards on Madison Street, so um, CTC strongly supports the, the resurface there. Um, just to better improve the access into our facility.
Thank you Jason. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'll just-
Thank you, thank you again for calling in.
Thank you.
Caller sixteen, you had your hand up next. Caller sixteen, please enter star six. Tell us your name and your address. Caller sixteen, are you with us?
So Mister President, maybe we should let them know that the last two digits of their phone number are one six.
Last two digits of your phone number are one six. You had your hand up? Pardon me Kevin?
Yeah, bingo.
Alright. One six will come back to you again.
We got it.
We got you. Okay, caller one six, please hit star six and tell us your name and address.
Had it for a second.
They hit it again, I think.
Are you with us? Caller? Caller one six, are you there? Caller one six, we've had you a couple of times. And then you've kinda, we lost ya. Caller one, if your phone number ends in one six, you're up. Okay, we're gonna skip over you caller ending in one six and move on to caller, what is that Jennifer? Some sort of hieroglyphic?
It is ending in eight zero.
Eight zero. Caller ending with a phone number eight zero, are you with us? Hit star six. If your phone number ends in eight zero, hit star six, you're up. Caller, caller with a phone number ending in eight zero. Hit star. Hit star six.
Say something.
He is unmuted.
Yes, we got you. Caller eight zero, welcome aboard. Tell us your name and your address and then tell us what you think of these projects.
Well, I've, I've already spoken. I, Dexter Hanson. Uh, Rosewood.
Oh yeah.
He owns the multiple.
Half of what you guys are trying to redo.
Yep. Is there anything else you've got to say before we move on?
Yes, the Fifteenth Street caller with the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So my kids, my sister's kids, my, my sister's kids go to Harrison, my kids go to Riverside, but I have had quite a bit more riffraff lately, like I have cameras all throughout my yard and I've had people. I had a stolen truck last year parked behind my garage.
I'm gonna have you keep it to the project since you've already spoke once. So be as quick as you can.
That's fine. So this Fifteenth Street sidewalk thing?
Yeah.
I think it is a bad idea. Because that's just going to promote more people going down towards the trail and there's gonna be more and more riffraff congregating there.
Okay. Anything else?
Not, no, that's it.
Thanks for calling in a second time. Okay. Anybody else? One six, did we, did we figure out how to work this? Anybody else? Hit star three to raise your hand and we'll get you in if we can. You see anymore Jennifer?
They might also have their phone muted.
If your phone is muted, you'll have to unmute, uh, unmute your phone.
There we go.
Alright, who's up now? One six, you're with us. Hit your star six and tell us your name.
No, they did.
Alright.
Hello?
Yes. Glad to have you aboard. What's your name and your t- address?
Mike J., fourteen nineteen Rosewood Street.
And what was your name, Mike?
Jay.
Jay, welcome. Welcome to the council meeting Mike. What do you got to say about the project?
Well, the sidewalk, I'm not crazy but about it too much because it goes right across my driveway. And I've got a wide driveway on Fifteenth. But how far back does the setback of the sidewalk gonna bring it? I have a fence there. It's been there for twenty-five years.
So Mike, we have a, a three-foot boulevard, a green space planned and a five-foot sidewalk. In most locations, where things got a little tight in a couple spots, we went right behind the curb in a couple spots. But um, I think in that location, we had a, uh, it's basically eight foot from behind where the curb is right now.
So there, there's gonna be a setback of eight foot?
The side, the back of the sidewalk will be eight feet from the back of the curb.
So I won't have to move my fence?
If your fence is in the right-of-way, and I, I don't think it is, I don't, I think we were staying away from your fence in this location.
Mister Chair, I have Mister Jay's property here on GIS. And according to G- GIS, Mike, you are roughly twelve feet back from the curb, so you should be in the clear.
Okay.
Anything else Mike?
Yeah.
Alright.
Then on Fifteenth, is the sidewalk just gonna go across or does that have a hydrant there at the corner?
If the hydrant is in um, conflict with the sidewalk, we'll move it a little bit. I don't believe we were planning on moving any hydrants down there.
Okay. And then are, are we resurfacing Rosewood two or not?
Not this go-around. Um, it didn't really show a need at this point.
I, I agree, but the only I wanted to comment was when they redid Thirteen Streets, they made Thirteen and Rosewood. The dip coming in there is way worse. You can actually drag bumpers on certain cars. So I just hope that that gets fixed someday.
Thank you.
Change order number two.
Yeah. Anything else Mike?
I think we're good.
Pause the hand.
Hanging in there.
Alright, thanks for calling. Thanks for figuring out that whole star six thing.
Yeah.
Anybody? Any, I wish I'd have known it was you. Anybody else? I, I'm looking for a star three to raise your hand. And remember, your phone's gotta be off mute. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. We've all had our chance to speak, some people twice. We will now close the public hearing at eight thirty-five. And we will look for a motion to adopt the resolution ordering the improvement.
Don't move.
Motion by Pritchett, is there a second? Second by O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing, Mister Sandy?
Just wanted to answer a few of the questions if, if.
Can you, can we let us vote and then we'll let you speak?
Okay.
I think.
There was just a few comments about the, the uh, dead end street that we could address, I guess.
Well, let's go ahead and do it. We have a motion and a second, so really we can't. So we're gonna pass on that.
Okay.
Okay? And I apologize, I didn't see your hand up. Administrator Burgman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Let's hear about the dead end street.
Well, I was just saying that, you know, if you guys preferred, we could leave that street short. You know, it's already a dead end right now, but um, it's really devaluing the, the property values in the future if we have a, a dead end street. Um, even if the property's vacant right now. And so that, he was commenting that the property's vacant and, and it would make more sense if we just stopped it at the alley, but.
It sounded like they had a serious alley issue.
Yeah, and that'll be fixed. If the drainage issue is right at the end of the street, we'll, we'll fix the street drainage and then we'll grade the alley back so it drains better.
May, do you, do you, do we know this citizen?
No, nope.
But we could probably find him.
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll be an easy fix, yeah.
Any thoughts on the dead end? Gabe?
I'd want to thought, a lot of people do access the trail from there. It's not a thousand people a day, but it is, it is people who live in that neighborhood. That is a good trail access. I wouldn't want to turn it back to dirt because kids are riding their bike there.
Mister Chair? Mister Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Tad.
No problem. I do know the resident, and so I'm happy to follow up along with Paul.
Perfect. Make, yeah.
Make that connection.
Get Paul the name and address. Tad, thank you. And you can certainly be involved. Jennifer Burgman?
Mister Chair, I do know that the public hearing is over, but uh, the gentleman with the number ending in eight zero did raise his hand.
That's Dexter Hanson again.
Dexter's had two turns and the public hearing is closed?
Yes, it is.
So Dexter, you call into City Hall and talk to Paul Sandy. We wanna talk to you anyway, but we can't let you speak anymore tonight because the public hearing's closed. And you already had two turns, but thanks for trying the third. We are gonna move back to agenda item. Where were we? Safety and Public Works Committee.
Thank you Mister Chair.
Uh, Chairman Mike O'Day.
We only have nine items tonight. And
Hopefully three of them are duh.
And eight action items. So we'll zip right through. Uh, first is a motion to authorize staff to return to full proactive enforcement of the city code. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion?
I can explain. It's basically about a year ago when COVID nineteen started, um, the city decided to pull back on some of the conduct enforcement. And only enforce complaint-driven um, city code issues. Along with some tall grass issues and junk issues that didn't need complaint. We're just basically going back to regular code enforcement. Uh, we've noticed that things have maybe traveled a little too far, so we're gonna rein that back in.
Thank you Chairman O'Day. Any further discussion? Mayor Bedow?
I just wanna say that there was a good discussion at uh, the committee level about hu- uh, communication on this. And you know, as the public obviously knows, we're here to do the public's work. And I know that sometimes people feel like we're picking on them when we go through with this type of uh, enforcement, but this is something that the public have asked for. And one of the things that the committee had asked for is that we're making sure that we're focusing on getting the word out to people on this before we start doing it.
Thank you Mister Mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion. We have a second. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that motion is approved. Item two, Mister O'Day.
Uh, item two is a request to approve event application Corpus Christi processional and ISO move.
We have a motion, motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
This is a religious procession going from the Saint Francis Church to Saint Andrews Church. Using some uh, fairly busy streets and uh, crossing a highway. They will have some help with the police and law enforcement, um, low to minimal uh, noise involved. And it's something we've done multiple times before and it shouldn't be an issue, never has been.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion is approved. Please proceed.
Item number three is a request to approve event application Downtown Brainerd Spring Fling. An ISO move.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the Downtown Spring Fling. Any further discussion?
This is just a, well, it's a fir- the first annual event downtown. Being put on by the new downtown, Destination Downtown Business Coalition. Uh, they're gonna basically close down the Laurel Street City Parking Lot for at least two hours on Saturday for um, some live music. Um, but they may close down longer. Uh, basically promotional for shopping and, and getting some foot action downtown. And this will be May seventh and eighth.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline. Yes. Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, let's please proceed. That motion passes.
Number four is a motion to approve the change order one for improvement nineteen dash ten in the total amount of eleven thousand five in a total amount of eleven thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson, any discussion?
This is, uh, I'm sure Mister Sandy could explain more if you guys want, but this is basically put- putting the project right on budget with a, a few hiccups that added up to put it on budget where it was below budget before. Um, some of this stuff to be expected, so really, really no big deal.
Thank you for your commentary. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll on change order number one.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
The next item is a recommendation to award improvements twenty-one dash zero one and twenty-one dash zero five to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, Aztec, in the total bid amount of one fifty, one hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and one cent. And utilizing proper signatures on the contract documents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett, any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Item number, is this five?
Seven.
Seven?
Oh.
Six.
Six.
Number, number six.
We had it all around.
Number six is a recommend- recommendation to approve this policy as presented. This was unanimously approved by the Transit- Transportation Advisory Committee, and I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Do you want me to?
No.
Okay.
Administrator Burgman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, see how easy that was?
Yeah.
Let's do it again.
Well, this one, Mike, requires uh, staff recommends installing a gate across the access at Evergreen Landing for use during the spring, he-spring season, and thaw to prevent damage to the roadway surface and reduce maintenance time and effort to repair. And we also added to this motion to add some signage to explain temporary closure so as not to spark outrage, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Chairman Johnson.
Uh, one question, is the spring season include fishing opener?
No.
Thank you.
That was the main part of the signage.
Seems to wrap this one up, eh?
Yeah.
Let's vote. Administrator Burgman.
You got it. Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, see how easy that was?
Yeah.
Mister Chairman.
Was wait for this one.
At all, let's try number eight.
Here we go. Staff recommends moving the 2022 construction of the trail segment on Highway twenty fi- twenty-five from Fifth Avenue Northeast to Twenty-Eighth Street Southeast to 2025 to be constructed along with Highway two-ten reconstruction with MINDOT. Further, staff recommends working with MINDOT to the des- on the design of the trail to be incorporated in their plans along with ensuring MINDOT will cover the 20% in local funds and engineering costs that would come along with this funding source, and I so move.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, take us home, Chairman O'Day.
All right, staff recommends not pursuing colored crosswalks in downtown area identified in previous discussions unless it meets the guidance set forth in the MUTCD for colored pavements. And our committee took no action on this. We're going to stay the course. Um, we believe we have grounds to do so.
Excellent. Anybody else have any comments? Mayor Bedow.
I just wanna make one quick comment that uh, when this was brought up, it was meant to be low-hanging fruit and a very small issue, and it has ballooned uh, to taking a lot of staff's time, and that was not the intent. So apologize to staff for this becoming a larger issue than it needed to be, and uh, hooray.
Hearing no further discussion, we will move on to uh, items uh, seven B. Right? Personal and Finance, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. We have six items posted on the public agenda. We did add two items in committee, then removed one, and we now have seven items to produce.
What's number seven?
Number seven is uh, Police Chief Business.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed with number one.
Number one is the consideration, the waive recertification of special assessments at PID four-one-two-eight-zero-five-zero-seven. The motion is not to deny Mister Town's request, but to have the HRA reach out to a contr- to the co- the developer and see if an agreeable solution can be found, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson.
So this is the only one that'll require a lot of explanation. Basically, we have a homeowner in the Serene Pines Development whose home was built on the wrong parcel, and it was adjusted over time, and it is now on the correct parcel, but the assessments went back onto the neighboring lot, and that went tax forfeit well after the time the city had the development agreement with the county HRA. It is now tax forfeit. This homeowner approached the city about us waiving the assessments so he could double the size of his lot, but instead, we're going to go the direction of reaching out with the HRA and see if their developer is interested in adding this lot to that development agreement or what. But thi- this will come back in the future. We didn't say yes or no. We're gonna get more information with the HRA.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Number two is authorization of payment to Mister Jedlinsky. And the uh, s- city staff talked to the county, we have the correct number, and the motion is to authorize staff to make a payment in the amount of five thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars to Mister Jedl- J- Jedlinsky, which is the difference in the rural and urban city tax rate for the taxes payable in the years of 2012 through 2020, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you. The next one is an unfortunate one. It's the resignation of longtime firefighter Rebalki, and the motion is to accept with regret the resignation of paid-on-call firefighter Daro Rebalki effective three-five, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Chief Stunick, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please proceed, that passes.
Thank you. The next item is to ratify the hiring of Police Chief Officer Jacob Engst, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Police Officer Jacob Engst starting at the LES step-one rate of twenty-eight dollars, twenty-six cents with a starting date of April 5th, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline, uh, Chairman Johnson.
Uh, just a couple things to note. This is our twenty-third licensed officer. We have budgeted for twenty-seven, so we're still in the process of trying to find more police officers. He did start today, and as far as we know, is still happily employed by the city and has not run away yet, so things are starting out well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that passes, please proceed.
Okay, the next item is a liquor license. The motion is to approve an on-sale and Sunday liquor license for CC's Bar LLC at one-two-one Washington Street, Brainerd, Minnesota, contingent upon police and fire chiefs' approval, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
So this was put on the PNF agenda because it is a Class One liquor license. It is a bar. It is not a restaurant. This is our eighth of twelve available Class One on-sale liquor licenses. But this bar is locating next to the Skillet on Washington Street in Northeast, and that building itself did have a Class Two liquor license that Ed Mattson had, but that license is now gone, and this bar will be replacing that liquor license.
Who owns this one? I didn't see the application.
Diane Christie Mills.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, administer, we have a motion, we have a second. Mister Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna threaten you with a good time on all this fantastic capital budget information that Connie presented to us in our meeting, but I do recommend you look at the agenda item and kind of lays out where our streets and pipes are going for the next five years and the big, many big projects that the Power and Light Department are doing with the water tanks, with the turbines, with all that's all listed, where we're going in the next five years and what we're spending big money on, I encourage you to take a look.
Are we gonna name some of these things? You know, like snowpaws.
Let's name the water tanks.
We should, we should.
I'd like to name a sewer pipe. Thank you, Mister Johnson. Anything else on this agenda item? Otherwise, just go to seven.
We're done on this, and then seven is the uh, we had, we had a brief discussion about the, the interim police chief and, and the desire to have a, a full-time police chief. So the motion is to request the Civil Service Commission to put together an internal candidate's police chi- full-time police chief eligibility list, and I so move.
Sec.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Thank you, Chairman Johnson, and please explain.
Yeah, so we, Kevin brought this item up. Do you wanna, you wanna, you wanna give the rationale behind it, Kevin? I'd, I'd rather Kevin. He, he explained it well at the meeting, and I think he
Well, as you know, Corky retired at the end of December, and we did an internal search for an acting police chief within the department. The only one that did apply was Officer Bestel. We, the Civil Service Commission did assign him to that duty. We also made a motion in council to keep him acting till the end of December of 2021. However, in talking to internal staff at the police station, talking to other police officers within the county and within Baxter, as all I've heard is raving things going on. He's done some really good things. He's currently doing two jobs. He's doing his old job as Deputy Chief. He's doing his new job at this point as interim act- uh, interim police chief. So I just thought, let's get, let's get rid of the interim, move forward so we can start looking at maybe possibly getting a deputy chief in there to help him.
I have a question, Chief Stunick. Um, would, would this, would he go through the eligibility process with the
We did have a discussion with Chris Schubert, and it's gonna go back to Civil Service Commission come up with some type of a plan, but there might be some modified system to go through.
Okay, all right, Chairman Johnson.
But the, the general belief out of committee is we, we want, we want to do this right, but we do think it is time to just move quickly. Let's get a police chief in place so we can move quickly to get a deputy chief in place if that position needs to be filled too, being that we have one guy doing both of those jobs right now.
He could, he's, he's like Superman, though. Any further discussion? Mayor Bedow, do you have your hand up on the police chief?
Yeah, the, the, my only question with it or concern with it is that we currently do not have a full commission. We have a, we have a quorum, but we only have two members of the three for that, that commission currently. Should be easier to find a meeting time. True story.
But that could go on for much and much too.
True, I, I, I just I just would like that noted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes.
End of report.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Next up is item eight, unfinished business, call for applicants. Looks like Mayor Bedow, what do you got first?
That's right. So first of all, let's just make a note that we are on unfinished business. Let the record show that the mayor's business shall never be finished. And I so move. Uh, this is a call for applicants. Uh, obviously, the applications are available at www.cI.brener.mn.us, and the mayor recommends, or the mayor, excuse me, has the following uh, committees available. The table, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. The Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, this is a good one because you don't have to meet that often. Uh, we have three terms expiring 2022. Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. I also have the uh, the following that expire on nine, seven of said year. The Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2021.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and the Council President has one opening for the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission. So if you wanna talk about our next police chief, you wanna get your application in pronto on that one. And there's always room for uh, two, two people on the Water Tower Committee. Item nine, new business, nine A and nine B have been dispensed with. Nine C is a proposed ordinance, one-five-one fun, one-five-one fun. One-five-one-five, amending section five-one-five thirty-seven on signs. Mister Tansky, you wanna hit the highlights on this one?
Yes, Mister Chair, I'll go quickly. Uh, March first, the city council directed staff to refer the sign ordinance to the Planning Commission for review. Um, the Planning Commission reviewed section five-one-five dash three-seven of the signs, of the sign ordinance, specifically looking at the non-commercial speech signs on their regular meeting on March seventeenth and not twenty-first on seventeenth. Um, and they made some recommendations. Uh, their main changes to five-one-five uh, three-seven uh, removes section uh, five C, which regulates non-commercial speech signs, places it with a new section that broadly regulates signage as well, and then adds a new finding section at the beginning of the ordinance. Additionally, all other language that appears to regulate signage content or give preference to commercial speech over non-commercial speech has been removed or amended. Finally, section five-one-five dash three-seven dash ten-point-A, that's just a slight um, amendment to accurately represent the city's current residential zoning districts that was requested by the commission as long as the code was open for review. If there are no questions, there, I'll ask, are there any questions from the commission?
Any questions of Mr. Tansky? Nope.
Then the motion we're looking for from the council tonight, Mr. Chair, is to conduct the first reading of proposal ordinance number 1515, but dispense with the actual reading.
Is there a motion? Motion by Erickson?
Second.
Second by Pritchett, any discussion? Seeing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stengline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Mr. Tansky, was there a public hearing at the planning and zoning on this or will there be one?
There was a public hearing held.
There was there, so there will be none at the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just to make sure that people, particularly those.
That is true, so.
Yes.
You may, sir.
You may, that's why I asked.
That was a, a motion to have the first reading and dispense with the first reading, dispense with the actual reading.
Yes.
The, the actual reading, dispense with the actual reading requires an unanimous vote. It was not unanimous. Therefore, the ordinance will have to be read in its entirety unless there is a motion to rescind the last one.
Well, I just don't want the ordinance to pass, I don't want to listen to it be read.
You have a choice to make. Just read it to you.
There's a way to slow it, they do this in Washington, right?
We're going to put it in a podcast, just have you listen to it.
Yeah, well, I'll just vote no to the actual ordinance. I'll rescind my, my no vote and I voted yes on the last motion.
Okay, so let the record show that Chairman Johnson has voted yes on the previous motion. Chairman Johnson, is there anything you want to say on this motion? That we should all hear about?
On the motion, on the proposed ordinance?
Proposed ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just don't like it at all. I, I, you know, it says we're, I, I don't have the exact wording right up in front of me, but I'll, I'll get to it here.
Why don't you get to it at the second reading?
Yeah, I'll get to it at the second reading, but I don't like where we say that our regulation of the signs is an effort to provide an adequate means of expression. I don't think the government is in the business of providing an adequate means of expression. I think the government is entirely out of the business of regulating expression, for one. And then for two, every property in Brainerd is allowed two Donderlinger sized flags that say F your feelings and two six-square-foot yard signs on H-stakes that say Black Lives Matter. If every house took that option, it wouldn't be orderly, it wouldn't be neat. So I, I just, I don't like the changes, I don't like the changes of the ordinance at all and I just don't support it.
Thank you. Well, we'll expect to have more, more comments, I'm sure, by the second reading. Okay, item D, 9D is the variance and conditional use permit amendment for Garfield Elementary. Mr. Tansky, is this you as well?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So Independent School District 101, they submitted a request for variance and a conditional use permit amendment to Garfield Elementary. Uh, the purpose of this variance and CUP amendment would be permit the construction of addition to the existing gymnasium. This was the one school that did not have a addition to the gymnasium included in the original project. So they came in a little under budget, so they wanted to be able to expand the gymnasium. With this, all of the district schools will have a, a gym that meets the middle school and high school requirements for a full-size gym. So we won't have this three-quarter size gym. All the schools across the district would have a full-size gymnasium. The recall so, so as part of this, they had a first request of variance from section 515-547B for principal billing setbacks. They're requesting a reduced side yard setback from 20 feet to 16 feet 5 3/4 inches. And then a pending approval of that, they needed to have their conditional use permit amended to include the new expanded gymnasium. During their meeting on March 17th, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to approve the request of variance and also voted separately to approve the conditional use permit amendment with the condition that at least two shade trees of a two-inch caliper size be planned between the proposed addition and the sidewalk along L Street Northeast. Mr. Chair, we will be looking at two separate motions here, one to approve the variance and then one to approve the conditional use permit amendment.
Perfect. Any questions of Community Development Director Tansky? Hearing none, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the variance?
Move to approve. Erickson?
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll on the motion to approve the variance.
Stengline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is approved. Secondly, we're looking for a motion to approve the conditional use permit amendment.
So.
Motion by Pritchett?
Second.
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stengline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion passes. We will move on to item number 10, public forum. So if you're online and been hanging in very patiently, now is when you get to hit star three. That raises your hand and then we'll recognize you and you get to hit star six. And you get to talk about anything that you want to that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so if it's already been discussed, then you don't get to talk about it again. So if you are interested in letting the council know about anything that's not on tonight's agenda, this is your second call, hit star three.
Mr. President, the caller whose number ends in 91?
Caller ending in 91, you have raised your hand. Please hit star six, unmute your phone and tell us your name and address. And then what, what's on your mind?
Hello, this is Jody Kennedy, the principal at Garfield Elementary School, calling in to just say thank you to the council and to the committee who worked on our permit and giving those conditional use extensions. We are excited to have the opportunity and I know that the city has worked hard to provide those equitable experiences across all schools in our district. So thank you again for your work tonight and all of the work leading up to this for all of our schools. Um, we greatly appreciate your teamwork and the support that the city has given our schools.
Thank you, Jody. I'm going to cut you off, that was on the agenda, but we sure appreciate the kind words.
I was expecting you to gavel her down or something.
I couldn't gavel you, Jody, thank you though. We appreciate, we appreciate that. Anybody else who wishes to speak on something that's not on the agenda? I'm not seeing anybody.
No.
I'm going to give you a third try, star three. Anybody at all, star three, raise your hand. And that closes the.
I'm just going to unlock my garage door.
That closes the, uh, public forum. Staff reports, let's go to who's on screen first. Eric Sharapantier from the HRA, anything to add?
Nothing at this time.
Chris Schubert from the, uh.
Human Resources.
Yeah, Human Resources, thank you.
Uh, just to let you know, we are still reviewing the American Rescue Plan. There's some, a lot of unknowns still at this point. There's supposed to be some federal guidance being provided here, hopefully within 60 days of when the act was signed into law, which would be around the 1st of May. So we're hoping to learn more, we're continuing to monitor the League of Minnesota Cities for guidance and I'm hoping we can come back with more information on that soon.
Thank you. Uh, in, in the office, David Tansky?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just got, I have one item for the council tonight. Over the last few months, I know some of you, many, multiple of you have fielded questions, concerns, comments from members of our community regarding rentals in our community. As always, I just wanted to point out that the Community Development Department, we have been working, we worked diligently to work with tenants, landlords, neighbors and the like on, on trying to come to equitable solutions to any problems that are raised when it comes to our rental housing program. However, we do want to point out that unfortunately due to certain current executive orders, that our, our job has made, been made extremely difficult. Unfortunately, again, due to these, due to these executive orders, landlords have been given almost zero power to evict tenants when necessary. And even if the city were to revoke a license, same, same thing as even if we have an issue with a landlord who may not be conducting their duties per the city code. The process normally would be to, to remove their license and when necessary, we will continue to go down that path. However, again, due to those executive orders, that property would not, cannot be, cannot cease to be a rental as any tenants cannot be evicted at this time. Um, we do continue to keep an eye on, on the legislature and see what's going on. There is proposed legislation unfortunately that would actually make evictions post emergency declaration more difficult. And so we are continuing to keep those eyes. Again, we do believe some, some proactive code enforcement will help, at least when it comes to issues with junk and debris, property maintenance, and we will continue to do this as we can. I just want to let you know that we are working with our landlords, tenants and neighbors as best we can as those, as these issues come up within the bounds that we are being given during this time of the pandemic. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David. Connie, anything, Paul?
Yeah, just one thing, Mr. Chair, and I completely forgot about this when we were in the public hearing for improvements.
I had it in my hand because I forgot about it too.
Yep, um, I talked to Attorney Langle, this, that can become part of the record. We don't necessarily have to read it tonight. Um, I would just invite you guys to read that email, um, if it, you know, we can make it a part of the.
Paul's referring to an email on the projects in Southeast Brainerd. You all got a copy of it, we'd like to make sure that gets in the record. It's, it's an objection based on cost on two properties from Alina Simmons, 723 Southeast 16th and 1526 Quint Street, with estimated assessments totaling over $10,000. So please note that and please get it in the record, who's ever taking the minutes. Thank you, Paul, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anything for the legal department, anything from the IT department? Anything from Parks and Rec Parking and all the other committees you're on, Kevin?
Not tonight, sir.
All right. Jennifer, anything from the administrator's office?
I have two very brief things. Uh, one, the Charter Commission, I will be brief. Charter Commission, um, had some follow-up questions after their last meeting. They are meeting again on April 14th. I would anticipate an ordinance, hopefully in one of your May agendas. The other thing, I did want to just bring you up to date on the franchise agreement. Attorney Langle has reviewed the charter, charter's agreement. We are also working with CTC on their franchise agreement. The Cable TV Advisory Committee did direct staff to work with CLC to see if there's an opportunity to have a partnership there. They would like it to be cost neutral. So I just wanted to let the council know that we are working on both those items and that is it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, run through around the table here. I think we'll start on this end, Mr. Stunek?
I have nothing tonight, the mayor's going to go nuts.
I'm going to put him, I'm going to put him on last.
Unbelievable. How about tomorrow?
Saving, no, 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 I'm saving the best for last.
For the reading of that ordinance and the mayor.
Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I've got a couple sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Uh, took the kids over to the Northern Pacific Center this Saturday afternoon and they had an Easter egg hunt and it was very well-attended, very fun event for the kids. Free event put on by Mr. Higgins and, and the business is located there and it was just a fantastic event. And I just want to thank Mr. Higgins for that and all of the fine businesses at the Northern Pacific Center. You should go check them out. The EDA met. So there's that. I'm the liaison to the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, EDA.
The, the PU, the, the Power and Water Department has entered an agreement with the city of Baxter, whose water supply has turned into mud. Uh, to, the city of Baxter is going to buy a minimum of 330 million gallons from the city of Brainerd in the next year of fresh, clean, drinkable water. And we, since they're buying a minimum of 330 million, we decided to give them a discount. We usually pay $3.60 per thousand gallons in the city of Brainerd. We are charging them $2.60 per thousand gallons. But we don't manage, we don't operate their distribution system, their hydrants, any of that. So the cost to just pipe water to them is less. So at $2.60, we're looking at about 15% profit margin taste for, for us, just for providing the water. And at peak capacity for both city of Brainerd, city of Baxter, most water ever used in a single day would be about 85% of the capacity of our wells, so there shouldn't be any problems. And one more thing from the Power and Water Department. They passed a resolution requesting our WAC dollars. The city charges the WAC fees when people build and whatever, and we have a substantial amount, about a million dollars. That wasn't in this meeting's agenda, I imagine it'll be in an agenda upcoming, but it's about a million dollars we have in WAC and they want to put it towards this four, $9 million water tank project they are, they're starting right now. So that will be before the, the council sooner than later. That's all I have.
Thanks for that enthusiasm for economic development. Holy cats. I have nothing else, I'm just in shock. Chairman O'Day?
Do you want me to go back and talk about any of the stuff from? Otherwise, I have nothing.
That's a good answer, you have nothing.
You stand in front of the mirror and practice reading the packet. Dave, Pritchett?
Uh, just a couple of things. One, the library is now open, limited browsing and pickup, which is awesome and hoping to expand that. Uh, the other thing, it is officially spring. I have boiled all my maples here, I killed a wood tick and a mosquito today, so we are there, all right.
Dave, you need to get out warm. Tiffany?
Uh, sure, so quick update on the Sesquicentennial. I apologize, Alderman Johnson, I did not bring a request for money tonight.
No apology necessary.
Uh, we are working on it though, we've got BPU on board to put up banners, so, um, we're working on a dollar figure unless Jennifer has gotten an email in the last three hours. Um, and the Parks Department, the Parks Board has been, um, they're, they're running with it, so, um, on their, their end of things. So we are making progress though.
Thank you, Tiffany, Tad Erickson?
Nothing that was not on the agenda, thank you.
Thank you. And now, saving the best for last, Mayor Dave Bedeau.
Oh, thank you.
Please clear the aisle.
Thank you one and all. Uh, first of all, we just, we're going to give a little shout out to Tad for making it to the screen here. Tad, because you have played musical chairs, you have lost your position in the Merrill Suite. And if you would like to get back in my good graces, you'll have to fight Councilwoman Stengline. Uh, it is hers now for the taking, so.
He's had the fundraiser for the Sesquicentennial.
That's right, fundraiser for the Water Tower. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who joined us for the public input portion of tonight's event. Uh, I, I am a firm believer that it should be as easy as possible for people to speak to us. Uh, I don't like the fact that people have to fiddle with their phones to try and just speak to their council people. So I appreciate you for sticking with us and for dealing with that nonsense. Easter egg hunt, I also attended the one at NP, but first I attended the one at Gregory Park, held by our wonderful Parks Department. And I want to say that Katie put on a fantastic event, really knocked it out of the park. I think that the way that the restrictions were put in place, uh, made the event run really smoothly. So hopefully that will continue forward. Uh, Jennifer was there with the rotary as well. Uh, the most important thing that happened at that portion of the Easter Egg Day was that I met a gentleman named Chuck Humphries and, or Chuck Humphrey. And I just want to look at the screen right now and say, Chuck, I see you there because you told me that you watched the council meetings and more specifically, you said you were a fan of the mayor's report. And so I just want to say, a true, true fan of the city of Brainerd, you are. So thank you, Chuck.
Chuck, we're going to talk.
That's right. Uh, but then I also just wanted to just mention super fat, oh, for the record?
For the record, Chuck Humphrey is my father.
That, even better. I knew that, but that's okay.
Is he allowed to stay up this late?
I'll tell you what, when, when people say they like, listen to the mayor talk, the mayor will talk. And just to follow up with the Easter Egg Hunt, uh, also attended the NP Event Center and I just want to say how great of an event that was as well. Uh, very well-attended and I want to thank Mike and Sharon for putting on that event and their staff for dealing with the larger amount of people that were out there and the patrons that were going to the businesses. But most importantly about this event, my family and I walked along 13th Street and crossed over a railroad track that we have tried for years to deal with Burlington Northern to get us a controlled pedestrian crossing. And I will say that roughly 1,000 people walked across those tracks and there was a train that came through shortly after. And I just want to say that I understand that there is this attitude that people are not crossing there, but I will tell you that my family, a 18-month-old and a three-year-old included, walked across those tracks in a line of people to get to this event. And I think that it is ridiculous that we continue to run up against these issues to try and get safe crossings in the city of Brainerd for our pedestrians. End of mayor's report.
Wow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 14 is we are looking for a motion to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05, subdivision 3C3, to consider counteroffers for the purchase of property at 502 Jackson Street. Is there a motion to move to a closed session after a three-minute break?